November fourteenth, Board of Selectmen meeting. As we always do, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, okay, we also always start with the public audience. I see a lot of people here. And I will let Joan Coe kick us off. And then if anyone else plans to speak, everyone has five minutes and you state your name and the street that you live on. And we time you. So just so you know. Sure.
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. Now that the election is over, it is time to review the performance of our elected officials. Both town committees that chose the candidates continue to nominate same candidates year after year. The performance of the Board of Selectmen has shown that they were more interested in getting reelected instead of assuming the role of representatives of the people. The present Board of Selectmen has spent months evaluating Town Manager Maria Capriola in executive session without any results. The Board knowingly has enough information from residents, businesses, and past employees that Town Manager Maria Capriola's contract should not be renewed. The Board of Selectmen, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, meeting agenda item: Creation of work group to develop an ordinance prohibiting the use of tobacco vaping and cannabis products on public property. What is omitted on this ordinance is alcohol use on town property. Drinking too much on a single occasion or over time can take a serious toll on your health. Alcohol, while often socially acceptable and legal for those age over twenty-one, can turn into a problem for many. In fact, alcohol abuse affects millions of Americans each year. It affects the brain's communication pathways, liver, heart, pancreas, and immune system. Alcohol consumption can impair driving, mood, and judgment with an increase of driving under the influence. Alcohol consumption has been documented as a public safety issue. How can the town have an ordinance prohibiting tobacco vaping and cannabis products with the omission of alcohol on town property? Alcohol consumption is prohibited in town buildings; why not on all town properties? The October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting had an agenda item: Proposed bargaining unit change for certain supervisory position. The Board of Selectmen voted to approve the promotions and increase hours for supervisory positions. According to the job description, the building official reports to the town planner and deputy town planner. Why was the building official who reports to the town planner and deputy town planner promoted to a supervisory position when the assistant town planner remains in the administrative union? The employees in these positions were not congratulated on their promotion by Town Manager Maria Capriola, a failure of management. The administration and professional union do not have representatives. No employee came forward due to the punitive and vindictive behavior that has been displayed toward recent representatives by Town Manager Maria Capriola. The Planning Department published a public notice of a zoning commission meeting for a public hearing on October seventeen, twenty twenty-two at the wrong address. The meeting was canceled. The notice also admitted the text amendment to Section two-six of the zoning regulation to extend the cannabis moratorium without noticing the timeline. This, too, might be considered an illegal notice. Mansfield notice on cannabis, quote, "Amendment to Article Three, Section Five to establish a nine-month temporary and limited moratorium on cannabis establishment." The new notice of the zoning meeting was scheduled for November second, twenty twenty-two. Town Manager George McGregor sent his subordinate employees to attend the meeting since he was on vacation. The Board of Selectmen have had many executive sessions to discuss the performance of Town Manager Maria Capriola, leading to the determination of our contract. Recently, there was an article in the Hartford Current, quote, "Want to retain more employees: Eight Tips for Becoming a Better Manager," end quote. One, be predictable. Two, listen and ask questions. Three, be willing to serve. Four, show you have your team's back. Five, strengthen your communication skills. Six, treat everyone equally. Seven, have empathy and compassion for your team. Eight, get to know your employees. Town Manager Maria Capriola should receive a failure on most tips. The DEI Council has had several meetings to discuss affordable housing in Simsbury. There has been no discussion at the Eno Farms Affordable Housing Complex that this is in violation of the Eno Trust. CHFA, the owner of the complex, has managed many of the units for moderate-income renters, when the town attorney and the land records reflect the use for low and very-low renters in keeping with the Eno Trust for the poor of Simsbury. When will Town Attorney and Town Manager Maria Capriola order CHFA to change leases to reflect the low and very-low income residence? When will the DEI Council review the management of Eno Farms Affordable Housing Complex as one of their charges for compliance?
Time's up, Joan.
All of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Patch, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Facebook. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome up, I don't know your name yet, so.
Is it five minutes per person or five minutes per half?
Five minutes per person.
Per person.
Good evening. My name is Karen Stahl. I'm a new resident of Simsbury. First, thank you for your service on the board. We ask your attention now to our crosswalk request. Several of us here are residents of the Mill Commons Apartments. We are concerned for pedestrian safety at the West Street and Grist Mill Road crosswalk. It's a state road for location. Second, we are submitting a signed petition and numerous letters of recommendation to the town of Simsbury for a pedestrian-activated crosswalk lights at that location. And I believe Maria, these should go to you then?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shortly, a few individuals will speak about their own experiences crossing. The dangerous encounters and risk to themselves, their children, and their pets is considerable. Crossing is hazardous for us. Cars put people already in the crosswalk at great risk by not yielding. They swerve around them and they don't stop. This is against the new twenty-twenty-one pedestrian law in Connecticut. There is no sidewalk on the south side of the West Street to go to a stoplight crossing, and there are two stoplights along West Street that would be convenient if we had a sidewalk. So this crosswalk that we use is essential for residents, students, and businesses. And there are some new businesses coming into the area, too. A bookstore is going to be opening. Chief Nicholas Bolter has recently directed the completion of a traffic study and engineering report. This is an excellent beginning to validate the need for improved safety measures. We thank him and Officer Jamie Ball. They have provided us with cordial guidance as we've gone through this initiative. So why are we here? Our concern is the data may be underreported. It is current utilization data: pedestrians, speed, traffic volumes, crosswalk violations. It doesn't include pent-up need. Those of us who are too afraid to cross, parents who drive their walker classified students because they're too fearful for their children, people drive to town locations when they prefer to walk. We're here to amplify that study work. We're here because we need your help. This is a state-requested fund, and we know these are expensive. We're here to ask you to apply to the state for funds to make our crosswalk safe with pedestrian-activated flashing lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Simsbury.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Kathy Mayhew. I live at seven-twelve Miller's Way here in Simsbury. And I'm here tonight in support of the words that Karen just expressed with regard to the intersection of Grist Mill Road and West Street. What we're asking is for the town to improve the safety of that crosswalk by installing pedestrian-activated crosswalk lights at that location. I walk my dog at least three times a day, and I make the trek across West Street at least once or twice a day. You probably have seen me walking. Any of you travel in that area? I'm always out there. It is extremely dangerous to cross and is becoming increasingly more dangerous. Over the past four years that I've lived here, I've observed an increase in the traffic volume on West Street as well as an increase in vehicle speed. Vehicles do not stop when a pedestrian is in the crosswalk. It can often take ten or more, sometimes twenty, vehicles to pass before somebody actually stops. I've had many experiences where I'm in the crosswalk, sometimes almost to the center line, and vehicles will swerve around me rather than yielding to the pedestrian. And when vehicles do stop, others pass around them, making it even more treacherous and requiring the pedestrian to be highly observant when walking or risk an accident. I understand that a traffic and pedestrian safety study was recently completed to assess this intersection and very grateful for those efforts. Obviously, the town understands that this is a location that requires attention. Adding pedestrian-activated crosswalk lights at this intersection will increase visibility of the crosswalk and pedestrians, making it safer for us and our furry friends to cross. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara LaRoe, and I'm at two-twelve Miller's Way. I'm also fairly new to Simsbury. We lived in Avon for twenty years, and we decided to move here to Simsbury, and we absolutely love it here. We really do. But I am here to support the idea of having those flashing lights on our little crosswalk. My family uses that every day. My husband works for E-Bad and walks every morning and every evening, and my son works at Fitzgerald's. He doesn't walk as frequently because I'm too nervous for him to cross, so I drive him down and pick him up. We only have one car, so we really, we came here and we moved to this apartment because it was so walkable. And my husband has had quite a few very close calls where you have three lanes of traffic because you have the left lane going into the apartment complex, and then you have the straight, and then you have the other direction. You might get one car stopping, but you've got to wait and see what the other cars are doing. And again, they swerve around. They actually will swerve into the driveway to get around. My husband has had very, very close calls. And unfortunately, the worst offenders are the buses. The buses do not stop, especially in the morning. They just will fly right past him. So because he works at E-Bad, he uses that flashing crossing when he gets down to the center and crosses over, and that works really, really well. They're going to be changing some of the hours, so they're going to be working nine-hour days. He's going to be walking to work at five-thirty in the morning, starting in January. So those flashing lights are super, super, super important for his safety. So, yeah, I just wanted to chime in and hope that that would happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to come speak? Okay.
I'll be brief.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm David Bush. I am chairman of Park and Rec. I lived for Catherine Lane. So often, public audience is a statement of negatives. And I'm here to be just before we're going to have a proclamation recognizing Simsbury Farms and their fifty years. And I look at a couple of you on the board here. I know I've seen you at Simsbury Farms. You're not only enjoying it, but you are helping to preserve something that is so special to this town. So all I really want to say is to the Board of Selectmen, thank you for supporting Simsbury Farms. Thank you for using Simsbury Farms because it makes Simsbury special, not just to us but to visitors as well. So in just a few moments, we're going to hear from John, I'm sure, but I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you and continue to support us in the future.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
We will. Golf league next year. Okay, so now, oh, more public audience. Hi, Lisa.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Lisa Gray. I reside at one-twenty Old Canal Way Wheaton, and I am not able to attend your public hearing taking place on the twenty-eighth, so I'm here tonight to offer you some additional things to think about while considering allowing the sale of recreational marijuana within our town that you may not be aware of. Many of my statements come directly from this book. It's written by a former presidential drug policy advisor and now co-founder with former U.S. Representative Patrick Kennedy of an organization called Smart Approaches to Marijuana. His name is Kevin Sebatt. The name of the book is Smokescreen: What the Marijuana Industry Doesn't Want You to Know. You can probably pick it up at the library. But today, there are more than ten times as many daily users of marijuana than there were when Bill Clinton was president. There's also been a major jump in marijuana hospitalizations and drug-driving fatalities, as well as demonstrated links between THC and psychosis, schizophrenia, suicide, and depression. Today's marijuana isn't anything like it used to be. It can be up to ninety-nine percent potent, and no one knows the effect this can have on the brain. The British Medical Journal, The Lancet, recently published research indicating regular users of today's highly potent marijuana are five times more likely than non-users to develop psychosis. Manufacturers of legalized recreational marijuana are packaging and spinning weed into countless other forms. Gummy bears and lollipops are now being sold with unprecedented levels of THC, all the while luring new and younger users. They're enticing them with cookies, sodas, wax, butter, dabs, and shatter. If you've never heard of those last three, don't worry, you're not alone, but trust me, the youth of Simsbury know what they are. Research shows marijuana use among youth can lead to a permanent eight-point drop in IQ as well as a significant increase in the risk of schizophrenia and suicidal thoughts. Since pot was legalized in Colorado, the state has continued to see increases in youth suicide coinciding with an increase in marijuana, which far outweighs alcohol showing up in their toxicology reports. You may be thinking, but we're not talking about making cannabis available to youth. Well, we all know how well that train of thought has worked with cigarettes and alcohol. If marijuana is made more readily available, it will get into the hands of our young residents. Just a few weeks ago, a sixteen-year-old Simsbury resident was taken by ambulance to the hospital after smoking marijuana with a friend. Would it surprise you to learn that no one in the states where pot is now legal has a clear idea of what precisely people are smoking, ingesting, vaping, and otherwise consuming? That today's quote-unquote "regulated" marijuana often contains mold, pesticides, bacteria, and other additives? That some of the state's agencies charged with oversight are woefully understaffed, like so many other employers today? And that so-called state inspectors often miss key safety issues? In some areas, known drug dealers have been granted licenses and are now operating in the legal market while continuing their illegal work? There's a naive public assumption that with legalization and the introduction of government licensing and oversight, illegal activity has curtailed and recreational marijuana is safer. A century ago, dangerous substances were marketed to look and sound completely benign. Doctors were featured in advertisements, including one which peddled asthma cigarettes without blinking an eye. We can laugh at these advertisements now, but we know Americans were duped by the tobacco industry for decades. As The Economist recently suggested, while lab animals are an expensive way of understanding the risks of cannabis use, Americans come free. I've heard many people say, well, alcohol is legal. Why shouldn't marijuana be legalized? Humans have been consuming alcohol for more than five thousand years. Most people who drink today are part of that cultural continuum, making efforts to prohibit alcohol futile. By contrast, we don't have the same centuries-long ingrained history with marijuana. Most people do not use and have never used drugs, and the laws reflect that. If properly applied, laws can deter and stop mass normalization of pot before it ever goes the way of alcohol. Did you know that during the brief period of alcohol prohibition from nineteen-twenty to nineteen thirty-three, diseases such as cirrhosis of the liver dramatically declined in prevalence, and that tens of thousands of lives have been saved since nineteen eighty-four, when Congress upped the national minimum drinking age to twenty-one? These are not reasons to prohibit alcohol because it is so ubiquitous, but these examples prove that access and availability are key factors of use with any substance prone to misuse. I don't care if an adult smokes a joint and falls asleep on their couch, and this isn't about sick people seeking relief from their pain. But why, as a town, should we rush headlong into allowing highly potent THC products to be sold without truly understanding the consequences? Some may say, well, if it's legal, Simsbury residents are just going to go into the next town and buy it anyway. That's fine. Let them. There are plenty of other legal businesses in Connecticut, like adult bookstores, that are not within our town limits. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Everybody all set? So now we're moving on to our presentations, and we have a special guest tonight, State Representative John Hampton, who is here to present a proclamation for the Simsbury Farms' fiftieth anniversary. So, John, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everybody. It's terrific to be back here in the People's House, and thank you so much for having me here this evening. Before Senator Whitkos and I left office, we wanted to make sure that we continued the celebration of Simsbury Farms, which is a town treasure. Long time in the making, starting with that gentleman there, Bresshaw, first Selectman when I was a child, and carried on through all of these folks and to this fine board today, a lot of board members, and a lot of Culture Parks and Rec members. I was liaison to the Simsbury Farms Complex Committee with great people like Tom West, late-time Tom West, and of course, worked with Jerry Toner and Tom Dubersky and John Tebow. My mother had seven crazy children, and I never saw a woman drive so fast to get to what we called Chris Orkill Farms, and just let us all out. If there were seven at the end of the day, that's great. If there were six or five, that was fine. But she knew that we were safe and sound and enjoying the rich treasures of that facility. And then and today, it's still one of the first spots that realtors will take people to, to Simsbury Farms. But it's been a labor of love with a lot of people and a special place for those of us who grew up here and for our children and nieces and nephews. Not having a campaign this summer, I spent a lot of time there, which was great. And it's just been amazing to see it grow from the apple orchard to the incredible improvements made to the golf course, to the pool facility, to the hockey rink, now to something called pickleball. I have no idea what that is, but I'm going to have time to enjoy that.
Ten what a day's meeting skills.
But I wanted to congratulate the town of Simsbury and all of you, and especially the leadership of Simsbury Farms, with a proclamation from the state of Connecticut. And I'd ask Tom to step up and Dave, if you would, that would be great. If I can read this, let me see, and present to you a General Assembly official citation introduced by myself and Senator Kevin Whitkos. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Simsbury Farms in recognition of your fiftieth anniversary. Spread out over two-hundred-and-thirty-five rolling acres on the former Orkill Farms' apple orchard. Picturesque Simsbury Farms opened in nineteen seventy-one as a center of recreational activity in Simsbury. Whether you enjoy the farmhouse, the playscape, aquatic center, ice rink, or golf, the farms offer something for everyone. You've helped to provide fun and healthy activities, sociability, a sense of community, and a point of pride for our town. We thank the town of Simsbury, staff, volunteers, and citizens for making Simsbury Farms such an integral part of the community and a place people can gather. And I want to emphasize the citizens' contributions who pay the taxes and volunteer and make it all happen. Congratulations on this tremendous milestone. The entire membership of the Connecticut General Assembly extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given this fourteenth day of September, excuse me, November twenty-two, the state capital, Hartford, Connecticut, signed by the Senate President, the Speaker of the House, and the Secretary of State, and I present it to you with my very best wishes and the very best wishes of Senator Whitkos. Do you want us to shake our hair or tweet?
Shake all of our hands.
And the hair. Please, place it in a good.
Thanks, John.
My pleasure. Congratulations. Absolutely, my pleasure.
Send her thanks to Senator Whitkos.
And to Jerry Toner, who's not here, but special thanks to him for all his great work.
Years and years.
Yeah, years and years.
Offer the courts. Okay, our next item on the agenda, we have a presentation tonight from the Economic Development Commission to present their annual report. We have Bob Crowther here. Come on up, Bob.
Just as a way of getting started, let me also say thanks to Tom and his staff. When I moved here back in nineteen ninety, driving up, I think today in January, must have been three feet of snow on the ground, and the realtor pointed off this piece of property off to the left and said, oh, look at all the people out there, snowshoeing. It's a lovely place. The town uses it. And I said, well, what is it? She says, well, it's a recreational complex. It's a golf course, a hockey rink. We drove up, hadn't have a Jeep, a four-wheel drive, so we got through the snow okay. We get to the top, and I looked at my wife, says, eighteen-hole golf course, recreational facility. This is the place. And I'm an active user to this day, so thank you, Tom, for everything you're at the farms. It's terrific. Okay, on to my yearly update. So very quickly, yeah. Okay, we want to today just to review our mission and our team members, discuss the EDC and economic development within Simsbury, review our existing work stream and projects and team assignments, accomplishments from the past year, and discuss the plans for next year, and we'll do a quick Q and A through that. Our mission statement, this was developed by the board. Key terms, as you read through that, we are an advisory board. We are an advisory board of the Board of Selectmen. We take direction from the Board of Selectmen. We work on projects, very much a task or a unit group, as defined by the work that is requested by the Board of Selectmen. And the other key term there is the collaboration, working with other organizations in town, like Main Street Partnership and the Simsbury Chamber and the other commissions in towns, trying to work with them to try to make them much more effective. That's really what we're trying to do. Current members, in addition to myself, we have Tom Earl, who's the vice chair, also works on the business incentives work that was done, and is a liaison to planning and land use development, and works with the DEI Council and has recently become liaison to the Simsbury Historical Society. Brooke Freeman works in the marketing group, also liaison to Simsbury Main Street Partnership program. Ron Jodis works primarily as liaison to zoning commission and also works on our work stream called Supporting Entrepreneurs. Caroline Meckel has come back to our team, and she's working on the welcome packet from Town Management, and we'll discuss. And then Charmaine Seavy, also working on the marketing brochure and the business outreach and liaison to the Simsbury Marketing Stream program. We currently have one open slot. We hope to fill sometime in the next year. We work very closely with Maria and Melissa and her staff. Work very closely with Morgan Hilliard, who's the director of Simsbury Chamber of Commerce, as well as Sarah Nielsen, who's the executive director for the Main Street Partnership. And Heather Gatz has been a very active member of our team, and we very much appreciate her help and support. We have some open slots here for liaison from the planning commission and zoning and from the Library Business Center that we hope to fill again this year. So looking at our work plan from, oops, hold on, the framework. From the ordinance that was adopted back in August of twenty eighteen, we are required to report annually to the Board of Selectmen on our activities by October thirty-first, and we submit our report by that time. And then we work with you to try to create goals for the following year, which we'll review here tonight. And then with the idea that we'll adopt a work plan for the following year by the end of November. Currently, we're working on four major work streams, those being business incentives, business outreach, the marketing, and supporting entrepreneurs. Okay. So our twenty-one, twenty-two adopted work plan, we did complete the marketing materials refresh for the tourism, the real estate and business recruitment process. We'll talk more about that. We'll talk more about that as we get into the report. On the business outreach area, we continue to conduct business outreach with our largest businesses and we are looking for ways to implement visitation programs for the smaller and medium-sized businesses, trying to look at creative ways of trying to do that. And we've thrown through these businesses, we were able to collect and track some excellent feedback from them and made some, implemented some of the recommendations they've come back to us with. We're also in the process through business outreach to create a welcome letter. There would be a town welcome letter signed by the First Selectman and the Town Manager to new businesses and to the town, as well as to continue to work with any new development projects in town. With the idea there being that we start with a development project like Barber's Cove from its inception all the way through to the end and as a way of understanding the full historical aspects of their working with the town, look for better ways to improve the various processes they have to go through for zoning improvements and what have you. We have begun work to take a look at the town official website around economic development and look for ways to clean that up and make it more relevant and more accurate. And then finally, we're looking for ways to promote our business resources from information and infrastructure on supporting our entrepreneurs. Okay. So, as we go through each one of these, the business outreach for the past year, we conducted over a dozen business outreach visits. The major ones you can see here on the left are some of our largest taxpayers in town. I found the visits very informative. I think Heather would agree with that. She participates very actively in all of those. We also have Maria participating and as well as members of our team and Director of Planning. Talk about what they liked about doing business in town, what areas can we improve on. Many of them give us some excellent feedback along the way. We found them very, very helpful. We will continue to work on a new set of visits for this coming year and I'll work with Tom to get that calendar put together here in the next month or so. In the area of marketing, we've been working very closely with Sarah Nielsen. She's been leading this effort. She did present to the Board last year on the consulting study that was done. The key finding coming out of that study was, the key question was, what do you like about living in Simsbury? And for once, it was not, you know, the quality of education, even though it's excellent. But more and more people talk about the quality of life characteristics, the small-town vibe, the beauty of the public schools, obviously outdoor activities, obviously like things like Simsbury Farms, you know, and safety. You know, we're able to take advantage of so many existing investments that the town's made, like the bike trail, the Performing Arts Center, the Flower Bridge, work there at Simsbury Farms as well as the hiking trails that are here. And people just really enjoy that overall quality of life, outdoor activities, excellent restaurants, excellent schools, a great place to live. And so, from that, we've tried to create the new branding image and come up with a new marketing brochure that I believe is in your packet. I think you all have seen this nice brochure and it's currently, we've been trying to distribute it as much as we can. We've got quite a few over at the Chamber for the visitor centers, for people coming in. It's very well done and I think a very good investment of town resources to put this together. They did an excellent job. So, with that. Other efforts for this past year. Okay. We have, I mentioned earlier, looked at the town's official website as it relates to the economic development aspects of it. Melissa and Charmaine and Brooke have been working on this. One of the interesting aspects is you go through that and you click on a link to go to the Doing Business in Simsbury link and it goes nowhere. So, it's those kinds of things that we want to clean up, make it much more relevant. There's an outdated picture of me in there that we gotta get rid of. As quickly as possible. So, we do have a lot of work to do in that space and I think it'll be a multi-year project going forward. We've recently assigned Tom Earl to become the liaison to the Simsbury Historical Society. Tom has formerly the Chief Financial Officer for Westminster, has a lot of experience in grant writing and is going to work with the Historical Society to help them on writing better grants for their capital needs. So, we think that's a good use of Tom and his skills. I continue to work with Mark Scully on the Sustainable CT efforts and the Clean Entity Task Force Team. We also participate in the Government Affairs Committee, working with Morgan Hilliard and her staff, helping to bring new speakers to the group and supporting her any way we can. Ron Jodas participated in the Short-Term Rental Ordinance Work Group that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen back in November of 2021. And Tom Earl participated in EVAD's permit fee request. And he's also involved in following the Iron Horse Development Project going forward, even though that's currently on hold, but he has been with that group since the beginning. So then, as we look to opportunities going forward. We're going to continue to clean up and update the town's website as best we can. We want to leverage the work from the marketing initiative, continue to work with the Simsbury Main Street Partnership in the Chamber to promote and support tourism across the town. The idea that Sarah has here is to create something called marketing themes. A theme could be, you know, around the wedding, families coming to town, they're going to be using the river view for their wedding, you know, where can they stay? What are the best, you know, hotels in town? What restaurants might they use? What kinds of activities might they be doing during their free time while they're here? You know, and really kind of flush that out so that as people come here as a wedding, we can, you know, provide them information about all these different various aspects. We can host the information on her website. And so, it's this idea that we want to kind of build this out so it's, you know, kind of leveraging then all aspects of various themes, take advantage of all the economic opportunities surrounding a various event that could occur. So, that's something that Charmaine and Brooke will be working with Sarah as we go forward. We're going to look at, explore the feasibility of hospitality task force. Currently, there's one with the Main Street Partnership. We want to see what we can do to help them be more effective and more efficient, if you will, start exploring other opportunities with them to really kind of, you know, in the lack of having a true tourism group in town, really kind of maybe take over that role. Eric, I know that's something that you started a couple of years, that conversation a couple of years back. And then lastly, we want to work with the Chamber in building out this tourism map. They get requests all the time. They're at the visitor center, you know, do you have any map that can show me all the different aspects of the town and things to do and places to go? So, that's something we want to not only have in print form, but also have it online so that they could use it to tell, you know, with their phone, walking around the town. We want to continue to look for creative ways to conduct our business outreach effort, strengthen the relationship between the town and town management with our business community and then continue to communicate with the DEI Council, identify work on areas of common interest, primarily around affordable housing. And the last thing we'll continue to work on is developing a worker, the welcome letter for new businesses from the town. So, that's what we're working on. Questions, comments?
I do want to just jump in here before we ask questions. I know that we have an agenda item to talk about the work plan for 2223, which is when we can maybe talk about that stuff because we do have to move the agenda around a little to accommodate the Board of Ed that's here. But we can ask some questions relative to kind of work that you've done, but if it's in the looking forward category, maybe we could save that to later. If the Board's okay with that.
Okay.
Does anybody have any other questions, like general questions?
The ability later on to post questions?
Yeah, about the future. I just didn't know if people have questions going back, you know, and things that you've done that we wanted to ask before then.
I don't know if it's future, Pat, but just a couple of quick things. After seeing your presentation, it's just another reminder that economic development is really a team sport and the number of people and organizations that are part of it is just a good reminder of that. Thank you to you and not only the members of the EDC, but staff and Main Street and the Chamber and all who participate in this work. I think that we've in the past done rotating business visitations where members of the Board of Selectmen participate and I just wanted to underline my interest in, you know, doing that next year and I'm sure others would too. So, that's my download, but again, I appreciate you being here, Bob.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, I would weigh in on that too because I was lucky to get invited to one of the events, which was the EDC one, but I do think that some of us would like to go to Cure Leaf and just see what's going on there and if there's a way we can kind of get the whole board involved in some of those business visits, I think that would be really helpful. I know it's hard because we can't all be in the same place at one time, technically, but.
It's easily done.
Okay, that would be great.
Just two things that are, because they are germane to lean down here. One, I do like the bear on the logo for the pamphlet. That's a great idea. I do, I just want to highlight Ron Jodas's participation on the Short-Term Ordinance Work Group. He was instrumental, so.
Great.
I appreciate his efforts.
How's the feedback on the brochure? Have we gotten feedback on it?
The limited amount that I've gotten back has been very, very positive. And but I think the, I mean, we didn't spend a whole lot of money to do this and I think the quality that we got back is excellent, so.
So, I have a question about the brochure. Is it available now widely to people if they want it or is it still kind of in the?
No, it's available. I know Maria dropped off a bunch to the Chamber. So, if you'd like to get one, let us know.
No, but I mean, I was thinking more about like realtors or when people are selling houses and things like this were available when people come because so many people are looking to relocate here. They're.
Sarah made sure all the realtors got it.
Yeah, yeah, because that would be a great target audience because a lot of times if they're realtors from out of town, they don't know about all the things that Simsbury has to offer, so it helps to provide that information.
Absolutely.
And I believe that the idea, correct me if I'm wrong, is to kind of tie the tourism map with that brochure so that they kind of are distributed together and it gives a little more detail really as to what we have to offer. So, you have the marketing brochure, which is a little bit more of an overview, and then the tourism map that goes into a little more detail of exact restaurants and locations.
Explode even more. So, those are referenced here, we can making sure that they get noticed, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I do the, my First Selectment's report, I'm going to ask for a motion to move the item G up the Latimer Lane Elementary School project to the top of the list to be item A.
Some words.
Thank you. I'll second. Thanks, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so I'm going to do a quick First Selectment report. I just want to say, one of our, we're down a man tonight and I hope that he's feeling better. I just thought I would mention, that's why we're five of us up here tonight. Simsbury Celebrates is coming, Amber's very involved in that and it's the day after Thanksgiving, the Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Yes, Saturday.
And the other thing I would advise is going to the preview gingerbread house sale on that Friday night because it's a really fun annual event that I always take my daughter to. Also, a reminder, there's a change in venue for our next meeting on the 28th. It will be at the library and that's when we're going to have the public hearing for cannabis. I just will quickly just thank the veterans, VFW Post 1926 of the American Legion for a great, wonderful Veterans Day celebration. I also want to congratulate the winners of the November 9th election from down from our District 16 race all the way up to the US Senate. Congrats to Melissa Osborne, State Rep. Elect. Kudos to Mike Payne for a race well won. And we will be looking to a recount scheduled for tomorrow for the State Senate. So, more to come on that. And the rest of this, anyone can read when they get it in the inbox, so I'm going to cut out and turn it over to Maria.
Great, thanks, Wendy. I'll also try to be brief this evening and since we have guests with us tonight. Just a couple of items under Department News and Notes. Our ice rink at Simsbury Farms is officially open for the season. We are having public skate sessions regularly on Sunday afternoons. We also do that often on holidays and vacation days throughout the winter. We have open skate during weekdays as well. If folks are interested in that schedule, they can go to SimsburyRec.com. Just another bit of information on Simsbury Celebrates, as a reminder, part of downtown, the main road, Hot Meadow, is closed during that time. And there are also the annual fireworks associated with that event. It's a really wonderful event, as Wendy mentioned. We will be putting out a reminder next week just about those potential traffic implications, parking, the fireworks, et cetera. So, folks will be able to see that reminder via social media next week. Some really nice news from the library. They are in the process of becoming a regional service hub for the Connecticut State Library for the blind and physically handicapped. So, this is going to just provide so much more access in terms of various book and magazine formats for folks with a visual reading or physical disability. Once eligibility requirements for the program are met, our patrons will be able to enjoy easy access to fiction and nonfiction materials with content for all ages as well as in multiple languages. So, I just really want to commend the library for their work in that effort. For the Social Services Department, our senior center is partnering with the Farmington Valley Health District to be able to distribute free radar kits. Those test kits are going to be available beginning December. Folks who would like to reserve a kit can contact our senior center. And the last announcement, this is a really great, great news to share. As you might recall, Social Services and Library partnering with the Aging Disability Commission and our Deputy First Select Person submitted a grant application to AARP for the Memory Cafe Program. That grant was awarded to the town and we were one of seven communities in Connecticut selected for that grant this year. So, we are in the planning and implementation process now and expect inaugural events to occur in early 2023. So, just really want to recognize everybody for their, that work in obtaining that grant for us.
That's great. Congrats. Okay, so now we, oh, we'll see if we have any Selectment Liaison or Subcommittee reports. We could start then with Chris.
Nope.
Eric?
I do. I wanted to give a shout out to the DEI Council for a really successful Affordable Housing Workshop last week. It's on SCTV if anyone missed it. It was really excellent. It was an explanation, really clear of what is affordable housing. It talked about myths around affordable housing. And for me, one of the most poignant moments was when they showed the professions of the people who live in an affordable housing development in Windsor Locks. And it just busts everything that one might think about who lives in affordable housing. We're talking about doctors, medical residents, airline pilots, teachers, police officers. I mean, it's really everyone in our community who we want to be able to support so people can live where they work. So, I really recommend you check it out on SCTV.
Great. That's good. Amber?
I have a few updates from the Simsbury Housing Authority. The work is progressing there on the improvements to some of the apartments that were funded by the ARPA funds. So, I wanted to let you know that is underway, which is great. Also, on Veterans Day, I was honored to join the residents of the Virginia Connolly Home and honor six resident veterans with a special lunch with certificates of appreciation and pins to recognize their service to the country. So, that was really meaningful event. An update from the Simsbury Food Pantry. This is the time of year when a lot of people are thinking about donating to the food pantry as the holidays are coming up. So, I wanted to give a shout out for some things specifically they're looking for, which are snack items, toiletries, drinks such as coffee, tea, shelf-stable milk juices and juice boxes, tomato products and baking products and cooking products such as oil, spices, condiments and things like that. What they do not need right now, that they have plenty of, are cereals, pastas and soups. So, if you are thinking about donating to the food pantry, if you could keep that in mind, it would really help kind of balance out what's on the shelves right now. And then finally, I would like to give a shout out to the Energy Assistance Program. If you or someone you know, you might need help with some heating bills this winter, you can contact Social Services to register for the Heating Assistance Program. Documentation is required, but this is the time to start thinking about it. So, you can call and make an appointment and go over all the paperwork required to get that assistance.
Thank you. That's it. Very good.
I have a couple.
Okay.
The Planning Commission is just beginning their update from the 2017 Plan of Conservation and Development. So, they're just beginning that process. A survey is going to be going out. A survey is going to be going out, and they obviously would like as much participation as possible from residents and stakeholders. Additionally, we have Luminary Night coming up in town on the 4th, and there is a lot of help that in a number of ways, obviously participating in the event and just being there, but they have, they need help putting luminary kits together on the evenings of the 28th and 29th. They also have different luminaries that you can purchase to decorate, or you could purchase to decorate, or to donate for others to decorate. So that's all on for all ages, and yeah, so any help?
Thank you. Awesome. I do want to just give a quick update. The Finance Subcommittee, we're meeting and get on December 1st, and we'll be looking at hopefully the final version of the business grant program. And then Maria has proposed that some outside agencies, rather than come straight to the board during the budget, kind of come to our group as like a pre- preview to kind of vet any questions that may come up so that we have all the information that we will need when they present to the Board of Selectmen during the budget. So just want to make everybody aware of that. And that ends that portion of the program. And now we're going to get into selectman action, and the first item that we have up is the recommended appropriation for Latimer Lane Elementary School. Just to give a little background from our perspective, we all sat in last Thursday night at the tri-board meeting with the full Board of Ed, full Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen to talk about, with Amy and Maria there, and others, I can't remember, and to talk about the proposals for the bids that have come in and the overage on the original Latimer estimate. So there's a lot of information here. We're going to turn it over, I think, to Maria to kind of target and kick it off.
Sure. So we were able to send out a summary today following the conversation that occurred on Thursday evening. As you know, we are experiencing a cost increase, but that's due to the current inflationary environment. That is not due to an increase in scope. The amount that was forwarded and recommended by the Board of Education is just over $2.2 million. Approximately $494,000 of that amount are costs associated with the outdoor learning spaces. You might recall those were presented as alternates two, three, and five. We did reattach that information for you this evening. In terms of process and next steps, you may recall that Balance Fund Council has determined that for the additional appropriation, even if it's funded entirely with cash, that we must go back out to referendum for that. So we have provided a timeline with key dates for you in order to sort of hit that timeline should this continue to move forward. For illustrative purposes, we estimated a blended average or a blended range of expecting about 33.57% for a reimbursement rate from the state. So that would be an approximate net cost to the town of about $1.5 million. What we've also forwarded to you for consideration this evening, staff would recommend that these cost increases due to inflation be funded with cash. I think that more specifically, we would be recommending that the Capital Reserve fund the majority of that cost increase. I think that we have done a very prudent, prudent move, and that we have been very careful, and we've been saving quite a bit over the last few years. So this is the type of reason why you build a Capital Reserve, right? Emergencies, unanticipated expenditures, and so we don't then have a negative budgetary impact. So we're very fortunate to be in a position that we could utilize the Capital Reserve. Staff is also recommending that we fund the net cost to the town of the outdoor learning spaces, which is again, an estimate, but around $328,000 with the ARPA dollars that we have available to us. You may recall the intent, the original intended uses of the ARPA dollars, ARPA dollars were exactly for this type of expenditure. And so we think that this would very much be keeping within the spirit of the intended uses of what those funds were for, and supports the policy that you all recommended for purposes to use those dollars. So again, our proposal is that we would fund this cost increase entirely with cash, and therefore it would not have an impact to the Simsbury taxpayer. From here, Wendy, I don't know in terms of discussion, if you do have additional questions, concerns, the Board of Ed team is here this evening, or if you may just, you know, want to see if they have any, any additional comments that they might want to offer in addition to what I shared.
Yeah, you guys could ask comments, or we can go down the line, and people can ask questions if you'd like to weigh in. Anybody?
I had two major questions coming in, and Maria, you answered both of them in your intro, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, I'll ask a question, a general question for the public. So we were presented with three options that, alternates that Mr. Luzetti, two of them were critical to the educational programming for the school. The third one, which was item two, was the next level of nice to have. I would like someone to explain for the public that's listening, you know, why are these three alternatives so important to the public, to the educational needs of the students? Not necessarily two and three, which, you know, Mike has said, but the outdoor space, what are we getting for the, I don't know, it's not up there, you know, it's basically the concrete sections are going to go in wherever those outdoor spaces are going to be, but this is just to kind of furnish the outdoor spaces, how it looks with the walls and the chairs. So could somebody talk to that?
Yeah, I feel like to say that it's just furnishing, it undersells, and I feel like maybe I undersold that at the meeting the other night.
Okay.
It does, you know, it does include all of the tables that would be in the cafeteria spaces as well as the outdoor classroom gathering spaces. It includes all of the benches, it includes all of the seat walls that would be used while kids are waiting for buses, and also, you know, defines, sort of, I think when I look at the, you know, at the music theater down there, and there's that arch wall that really defines that gathering space, you know, one of those is an arch wall as well there that does something similar that really defines what would be an outdoor musical performance space. So while, you know, three and five really lay the groundwork for all of, all of, all the things to come, two really defines those spaces and brings them together and makes them function at the highest possible level that they can function.
So it includes the cafeteria tables?
So it includes the outdoor cafeteria tables.
Oh, the outdoor, oh, okay.
We're getting the indoor ones either way.
Okay, by all means. And just one other thing that I just wanted to mention for the public also, we had an agenda item related to the Board of Ed that is being pushed to another meeting, which is kind of an ask, but it's being, we're being told that it's a savings in another bucket of a capital item that will be used for the bleachers at the high school. And it would have been nice to have it done tonight just to discuss all the Board of Ed asks, but there are some conditions and pieces that needed to be taken care of by the town. So that discussion will happen next week unrelated to this conversation. But I did feel like people should know that there is that ask and overage coming to us next week.
Wendy, if I could just clarify quickly. So we will be at your next meeting, asking to do a budget transfer. Sometimes it's referred to as a budget adjustment, and it would be to reallocate savings from an existing approved capital project at the high school to another approved capital project at the high school. So it would be a kind of reallocation of savings, so it wouldn't be coming back and asking for additional, additional funds. It's just reallocating project savings to another project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I have another question, but I will let others ask any questions.
I guess my, I have a question about the, the outdoor seating. It seems to me like if we were to not fund that request under item two now, you're not utilizing those spaces. I mean, at some point, it would need to be funded. I mean, like, there, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be the intent of the school to just leave those spaces unfurnished in perpetuity, right? I mean.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to, to kind of line it up, right? And one of the challenges we have, and I think we talked about it at the three board, and we'll be talking about it during the budget process, is we have, we have a lot of needs on both the town side and the Board of Ed side for facilities. So part of this is while we have an opportunity to try to do this to scope, you know, what was originally in the scope, we would try to find ways, Amber, to do that down the road. But the reality is when you line these things up with maybe what other specific urgencies are at the time, that's where it becomes super challenging. So if we did not have an opportunity to do this, we would find, you know, try to find a way to go to our PTOs and do some things, but it certainly wouldn't be to the degree or the quality that is currently stated in the product. And this is like heavy-duty furniture that, while we talk about the educational value, you can't have an educational space without some of these fill-ins. So I understand it's always tough when you rank priorities, and Mike, I think, did a good job of saying you can't even talk about the furniture until you have the base set right. You have the base set right, well, yeah, it will be empty initially until we have to figure out another way to do that. And it certainly wasn't the spirit of what the proposal was.
Right. And it also seems like then you're just creating a space that's going to be significantly underutilized because you don't have the proper seating to be able to utilize it. I mean.
What's the life expectancy of the seating and furniture, and like, what's kind of the years, amount of years you think you'd get out of it?
Of the concrete walls?
No, she's got a.
No, no.
At the table.
Concrete.
Hopefully a long time.
I mean, 20, 25-year lifespan. I mean, it's similar to some of the, I don't know if you've seen the courtyard at Henry James that has some of the, the heavy-duty kind of circular tables with seating. I mean, it really looks nice and is incredibly durable, so.
A couple of questions, just to confirm, would we use reserves for everything but the ARPA funding? That our reserves are in a good position going forward?
Yeah, we did include that balance for you.
Two million.
Well, isn't there a percentage of 15, is it 15?
Oh, I think you're thinking of general fund reserves.
Okay, sorry.
This is separate from the general fund reserve. This is the separate Capital Reserve, which is set up for.
2.2 million.
Exactly. So once we deduct that, that amount, we are estimating the balance would be just under about 1.6 million.
And is that kind of our target balance?
You know, we're always happy to have.
Have more?
And they should also just say, there is one caveat, we did include this in there for you, is the one point, little under 1.6 million that would be left remaining, that does not include the funds in Capital Reserve that we specifically allocated for future debt service payments. So that is still preserved, that is separate. This would be truly dollars that would be truly available for other needs that might arise, and that would be just under about 1.6 million that we're estimating.
Okay.
And then, if you wanted to add anything.
The other comment I just want to make is the use of the ARPA funds. So we do have a balance of 3.5, but some of that has been targeted for other uses, so it's not a full balance of 3.5. You know, we have a few commitments, we have some people coming in to ask for more things. We have it slotted in some out years where we could use it, although we may find alternate ways of funding for some of those out years. But I did want to make it known that we may have to make decisions at some point to, you know, we're not, this doesn't create a need for a tax increase here, but it may in the future, when we get to the budget and using the, the ARPA funding requires some sort of changes or prior, change in prioritization for that money. So just want people to make sure that they know that. That's all. Okay, is there any more questions?
We will have discussion now?
Pardon me?
We'll have discussion.
Do you want to have discussion?
Will we have discussion once we vote to move this forward?
Sure, if you want to do it after, sure.
It's the traditional format, right?
Well, we usually ask questions ahead of time, too.
It's a lot of questions to stay even.
Okay, sure. So I'd like to ask for a motion to move effective November 14th, 2022, to approve and recommend an additional appropriation of 2.261837 for the Latimer Lane Elementary School project, and to further recommend the, to fund the appropriation with cash from Capital Reserve, and for the outdoor learning spaces to be funded by ARPA-themed grant dollars.
I'll move that.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So I won't go into the same sermon I went to the other night, but when we look back at this, it will say again, who is it for us up here to sit in judgment of what is the right thing for the education of the students of our town? Now, that's another organization has made that statement and clear recommendation. I go to the presentation here, it says 79%, 80% of those voting voted for this. That means I recognize the need for the school, and they want the school. We look at the numbers, we break them down, 2.26 million up to 39 from 36. You deduct state offset, you deduct ARPA, you're looking at that 1.1 that we're going to, we would be funding for this. That's less than, so the cost increase is 5%. After those deductions were made, it's down to 1. something percent increase really to the town. I think the townspeople resoundingly said, make this investment at 80%, of those who voted in favorite. So increasing the cost by whatever it is, 1. something, is a clear no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. I also applaud Maria and Amy and those who had the foresight to develop the Capital Reserve Fund. This is exactly the reason we can use it. So that's my statement.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and there's nothing to. So that motion passes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next up is, we're back to EDC now. Bob's still here, and we have Bob's annual work plan to talk about. See, he's not leaving, is he?
No.
[laughing] Are we waiting for something?
Yeah.
I wasn't sure.
Sorry. I know we're.
Just the last page, right?
Yep.
We also included the proposed work plan in your packet. So as in the past, the EDC will usually generate some ideas for discussion purposes with you all in terms of work plan items for their upcoming year. And then, you know, they'll get feedback from you all in terms of, yes, we think these are great ideas, maybe you'd also like them to take a look at something else, and it's just generally a good discussion. So we were looking for feedback this evening, the proposed 2223 work plan. If you go to page 15 of your packet, you'll see the items that are proposed. So again, just looking for feedback, you know, if you want to approve it as adopted, or again, if you have any suggestions for, you know, things to take off or perhaps things to add.
We touched on all these during the presentation, so if there are specific things that you would like to include, please let us know.
Do you have?
So I just took a couple, one comment and a question. I really echo Wendy's, Wendy's ask to be included in some of those, those business visits, specifically for, on her behalf. I really echo that, I think that makes a strong statement. They don't want to see me, they want to see her. The, you know, one of the things that was interesting in here, and this is purely an observation, just education, I think it's, you guys highlighted it, that, and I was reading from my iPads, I couldn't necessarily, sorry, so I wasn't ignoring, but there was a hospitality work group? Yeah, so just curious, because when you look back at the business outreach, none of those businesses are restaurants. And, but I feel like this board, not, I apologize, not speaking for all my, my fellow teammates up here. I think a lot of times when we go out and go to restaurants, we hear quite often from the owners of those restaurants, of those people, about the help they need, the dynamic, the situation they're in and whatsoever. So not just the hospitality work group, but it might be interesting, I just, I think after you guys do maybe a concentrated, you know, visit to some restaurants, when you do your outreach, do ideas three, five, 10, I don't know, all at once versus staggering them across every fifth of the businesses you do, just be interesting to get what a concentrated impression is from their needs. And then that would be something I would, I think this board might find interesting as far as one of the focused work groups that you worked on or businesses from an outreach perspective, to hear really what their, their needs are. Which I know that, and this is the end of this sermon, is that I know that the good work that George and his team did, and a lot of the foresight through his predecessor as well, you know, through the pandemic, the evolution of how we dealt, how we understood the delivery of food in this town, and in this, our country as a whole, really changed. And, you know, we certainly have learnings from that, and I hope that we take that back and we, and we're applicable, that they could be utilized with our zoning team to figure out how do we change some of those dynamics to make sure that those new learnings are workable and easier to path and find for new businesses going forward, and new restaurants going forward. That's the end of tonight's sermon.
Did you have two questions?
The second question.
Or do I wait?
No, 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 no. Let Heather go.
Do you want to, who, does it, you have a question?
I had a question about the.
And, you know, we certainly have learnings from that, and I hope that we take that back and we, and we're applicable, that they could be utilized with our zoning team to figure out how do we change some of those dynamics to make sure that those new learnings are workable and easier to path and find for new businesses going forward, new restaurants going forward. That's the end of tonight's sermon.
Did you have two questions?
The second question.
Or do I wait?
No, 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 no. Let Heather go.
Do you want to, who, does it, you have a question?
I had a question about the, the map. I, and maybe you're not prepared to speak to this tonight, but it's kind of alluded to that, like, you need some funding to be able to complete the map. Do you have any idea what the ballpark is for that, or not really, or just?
Uh, we had a proposal, there was actually four pieces within the overall proposal, and that was one of them. And I think that was probably the smallest dollar amount in the whole package. And I think the whole package was, like, 7 million was for the build out of the co-working space and that whole aspect of it. But I think the tourism map was like a million, it was very small. Wasn't, wasn't very much.
That's a lot.
I'm guessing.
Yeah, that's okay, I can help a little bit with this. So, um, you may recall.
Excuse me, it's way too much.
It's, it's.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it was, um, the original proposal, and we're going to be firming up that number because a year has passed, and it was also looking at an allocation for about a five-year timeframe, because again, the ARPA dollars, right, could be spent through 2026. So it was the initial update to the map and then subsequent updates to the map. And so if we were to take sort of a holistic approach to it, and again, we'd have to go back and reference the proposal, I believe it was around 50,000, but again, that number is being worked on and updated, and that was for a five-year period and not just the initial. But they are working on those numbers, and Bob and Morgan are going to be coming to the finance subcommittee. I believe that's your December 15th meeting to go over that proposal in more detail. The original document was shared with that committee last summer, but tabled. You may also recall that the tourism map is something that we did have in the past. We actually, in addition to the visitor center, my office gets a lot of requests for this. People remember it, they come in, they ask for it, they call, hey, can I get a copy? We've long since run out of copies, which were also just terribly outdated at this point. And prior to the tourism committee being sunsetted, you may recall that this was sort of one of their final recommendations, that they also endorsed this concept. Again, our initial thought was working through the budget process, working with ARPA dollars, and that this again would be a way to help support business recovery and sort of promote tourism in town. So I think we're looking forward to presenting this to the finance subcommittee. If the funds, again, were approved through the budget process, this is something that they would sort of do in the second half of their work plan for the upcoming year. So we did make a note, funds, you know, funds permitting and the work plan.
And the co-working space is not, the co-working part is not a part of that, it's just the tourism map.
Just the tourism map.
Will you be bringing a sample to our meeting?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And it's also, what I, we heard before was that it's online also, so you can, you know, are we going to have an app?
QR code, probably.
Yeah, that's true, QR code. I have a question on the website changes. So there's a lot of discussion here that they're so out of date. Do you guys have the resources to do that? Are you looking to the town for resources to do that?
Great question. So I think what we're trying to do first is just inventory whatever our needs. We know the resources to do the work is step two, and how we actually do that is to be determined. But we really, we just want to assess, you know, initially get a good, good understanding of, you know, how big is the problem, you know, really define that properly, and then figure out the best way to attack it.
So somebody's going to do a project plan for the economic development updates to the town website?
Yeah, and Melissa, I'd probably like to put you on the spot, but do you mind just elaborating a little bit in terms of how you've been tackling it so far?
Yeah, so, I mean, the first step was really to do more an audit, of course, of the parts of the website that address economic development, whether it's the planning webpage, the actual economic development webpage. I don't want to draw necessarily attention to it, but on the homepage, there's like a visit tab at the top, and that could use a lot of work. So the first step was really to do an audit, to look at, you know, like Bob mentioned, deadlines and outdated documents, and we can just easily do in-house to keep it up to date, make sure everything's relatively current. And then, you know, as we started doing that, working with Brooke and Charmaine, it's like, you click one thing, you get to a page, and you realize that page itself needs a, needs a lot of work, and it's, so we're, we sort of need to map that whole, that process out. So sort of two things, doing the initial audit and cleaning up the things that are low-hanging fruit, and then figuring out game plans from there, on the larger.
I have a related question. I have a couple of questions, sorry. Are we doing any more, so we had a tourism committee, right, they're gone, but we have a person who's managing a Facebook page. Do we have a social media plan to use either Instagram or, I don't, Twitter, I'm not going there anymore, Facebook, you know, to kind of promote this stuff? And is that something that would be integrated into this plan?
Great idea. Uh, right, right now, we don't have the resources to do that. I think Sarah and Morgan individually, within their own webpages and their own, you know, kind of do their own little promotion. So to the extent of, you know, what can we, what's currently out there that we can leverage, you know, try to be creative.
I'm wondering, because it came up at the last EDC meeting, if you could just speak a little further to the hospitality task force, because, you know, I know Main Street does something along those lines, and the ideas that you had were additive, different, just kind of, you know, speak to.
Oh, sure. Yeah, thank you, I'm glad you brought that up. So very shortly before the pandemic, a small group of potential stakeholders, the idea of sort of a hospitality task force, and I did share at the meeting if we need a different name, that that's okay, but had come together, I believe it was 2019, and had this idea of, is there an opportunity to really kind of cross-promote and market our businesses with our, you know, our performing arts venue, other, you know, venues we have in town, athletic venues, et cetera? This is really quite common in communities that have performing arts venues and/or large athletic facilities. And so I'm sure you, you know, gone and you might go see a play, and, you know, the play bill has, hey, you can visit this restaurant, this restaurant, this restaurant today, bring your ticket, you know, get a discount for a meal, those sorts of things. So again, really trying to leverage these really wonderful resources that we have here in town. And when we have people coming to visit, again, sort of cross-promoting and marketing with our, our hotels, our restaurants, and trying to maybe find a way in terms of how to help facilitate that. So I really don't envision that we, the town, would be in the driver's seat, at least when the discussions had happened previously, and I think Eric was in on some of those conversations, it was never really the intent for the town to sort of ultimately be the facilitator or driver of that, but if there was a way for us to sort of help connect stakeholders, maybe help get that off the ground. But I think the, sort of like, again, the various venues and chamber amenities that are sort of taking that, that up and running with it.
Yeah. If I recall correctly, I was, I was really enthusiastic about this concept, and I think the challenge was finding the right owner. And then the pandemic happened, and then, and then here we are. But Bob, this was one, I'm glad you highlighted it, Heather, because this is one that I'd love to see get some traction.
I have one more question. So I always picture the, the ticket booth at the PAC as like a hub for tourism, because people are walking, we're going to have bathrooms there sometime, we're going to have the shows there, we have the bikers. Is there ever thought to adding a tourism, you know, post there? I know there's not somebody that works there all the time, but, and I have no idea of cost, but you're talking about a tourism map, like a kiosk kind of thing with a map to have there for people that are in town. You know, is that cost prohibitive, which we don't know right now, but just, does anybody ever bring that up as a place for tourism information, rather than even in conjunction with the chamber or in place of the chamber?
We, we talked about this.
We did, I was going to say, this is going way back, and I think probably during Eric and Chris's first term on the board. And at the time, the Historical Society was really interested in trying to do some sort of like downtown kiosk that would be staffed with volunteers and that they could, you know, share information with the public. And I think at the end of the day, when we sort of looked at locations, facility that they could, you know, work out of, finding the volunteers, it just really became sort of an overwhelming effort. And at the time, I believe the discussion was, okay, well, maybe we can invest a bit more, help support the chamber and that effort and serving in that capacity, because at least there are people, right, in that building staffed Monday through Friday. If I have no Eric or Chris.
There was also the challenge of, you need an owner to, to update it frequently.
Yeah.
And I think that's where we struggled.
Well, yeah, there was a separate, there was, it was an appropriate, it was a funding ask, and we decided no, and, but I, but Wendy, are you, but that was, that was about using a space that wasn't fully utilized round the clock, if you will, or a maximized space, and then sort of multipurposing it. But do I hear from you is putting a, an organizer at that building where you just have, like, the brochure and information, is that what you're saying? Or are you actually having, talking about person?
At different, different levels, we could be, just the information is there with, you know, tourism, tourist information, right? Because it is a hub, I mean, you look at it as a hub, it even looks like a tourist booth to me. So not even staffed, if you want to go on that low end, then do you have some sort of kiosk or information there? Or the staffed part, you know, maybe the, we could partner with the PAC during the season when the ticket booths open and have them give out stuff. I don't know, just.
Today, the chamber kind of fills that role.
But I do, I do, I do think it would be a neat little area to, if you were just having freestanding, something to grab, you know, that would be the logical place for it, I think there is, if, so.
Yeah. Something, I guess, to consider and evolve into the 2223 plan as it moves along, right?
Absolutely.
So if you guys consider those things, I'm going to ask for a motion. Okay. You're going to move effective November 14th, 2022, to adopt the 202223 EDC work plan as presented with the potential for some expansion of ideas. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's no names, great. Thanks, Bob, thanks for spending the night with us.
If I could just quickly, before Bob takes off, I would just really like to thank Bob and the EDC team for all of their work. I know it was a very strategic decision, when you reconstituted that group in 2018, that you wanted them to be more project-oriented and kind of task-focused, and they have just been so wonderful for Melissa and I and the staff to work with. They're just really talented folks, and we're just very, very grateful for their work, and just wanted to say thank you and recognize them for that.
Appreciate you.
Bob, have a good night. Okay, now we move on to item, we have to do the numbers, item C.
It's an item Tom.
Item Tom. So this is the request for an alcohol permit to the Apple Barn event. I have to give my, I went to the first one, signed up right away, it sold out right away, and I had the pleasure of sitting next to Katrin, Kate, yeah, Katrin. And it was a lot of fun, it was, I thought it was very hard, but I highly recommend it. There was no overdrinking that I noticed there, everybody was very well-behaved, it was a very great crowd. So Tom, if you want to, anything you want to say to, about the paint set?
No, we'd like to hold another one, obviously, in January, and we plan on doing this a number of times going forward. Maria, Steve and I are kind of, are looking at coming to you in the next couple of months with a possible change to the regulations, you know, concerning the permitting of alcohol at Apple Barn. But until we do that, you know, we're going to, we're going to keep coming back with these requests for your consideration, and I hope you'll support it again, again, it was a well-run event. Again, Maria, what Wendy said, it was, it was well-attended, it was, people were well-behaved, and I think we're, you know, these are common events in other communities, and why not here? And it's a, it's, it gets out of our box of doing things just for kids, and that's what we should be doing, so.
And I'm a terrible painter, all I can say is my painting, it's in my office, it's horrible. So I'm going to go again, hopefully, and I will get better as time goes on. So I'd like to ask for a motion to move effective November 14th, 2022, to issue an alcohol permit for the legal possession and use of alcohol at an event at the Apple Barn on January 12th, 2023.
So moved.
Second, second, all those in, any discussion?
Final question, and it sounds like you're working on something, but is there a way that we could approve the alcohol permit for tonight and future events as long as the events are essentially the same? Or do you not want to do that tonight?
I would love to do that, that's up to you.
Yeah, we could definitely consult with Bob. So with the public gathering permits, as you know, we currently don't have a formal policy or an ordinance, so we have a lot of flexibility just to sort of make a, right, a decision at this level. There is a specific ordinance to this effect. As Tom mentioned, we are working with Bob on trying to do some updates that would make it a little more flexible for things of this nature. But in the meantime, I think that is a very good legal question, and we could definitely ask Bob about that.
And if you just, and if you boxed it in by a year?
Right.
Like a calendar year, I mean, what are you talking to? Going to get out of hand, I mean, so.
Right, right, so sort of a short-term fix and then a long-term fix with updating the ordinance. Yeah, we can definitely ask Bob about that.
Okay, but for tonight, let's vote, all those in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
No names, okay, January 12th.
Thank you.
So now we have a couple of donations. The first one is a, is proposed from the Friends of Simsbury Farms. Do you want to talk about it?
I can, you know, a little bit for you. I came back to, I think I came here in the spring, maybe in May, and certainly worked with the Friends throughout the years. They, they've made a lot of efforts and fundraisers to try to, to reach a goal of $50,000 for the 50th anniversary of Simsbury Farms, and certainly over the last few years, they've done a lot of, of great work to support the department. This particular effort was to level the tees at, four of the tees at the golf course, two on the front nine, two on the back nine, and it's made a huge, obviously, it's going to make a big difference, we're going to reopen those next spring. This is on top of four tees that they did last year that they helped us with. And so it's, you know, we're always striving to improve the golf course and obviously bring up rounds and revenue. This will go a long way toward doing that. That's one of the things golfers notice when they're on, when they play a golf course, is you certainly notice, you know, a place that's well-maintained and a place that's not well-maintained, and I think all of you who have been there would agree that we're one of the well-maintained courses, and we like to continue to do so. This work has been completed already, and we'll reopen those tees next spring, that's the plan. But what I'm hoping is you will accept their kind and generous donation and these funds, and there was no cost to the town for this at all, so.
Great, we really thank them. And I'd ask for a motion effective November 14th, 2022, to accept a donation of $13,048 from the Friends of Simsbury Farms to partner with the Town of Simsbury on tea leveling projects at the Simsbury Farms Golf Course.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, to the Friends of Simsbury Farm. The next item is a proposed donation from the Boswell family.
Sure. To speak to that very quickly, the Boswell family has donated a number of amenities in honor of Brian Corsher, who died some years ago. He meant a lot to their family, obviously, and to the friends, his friends in the community. They do a lot of fundraisers in the community to benefit things at Simsbury Farms. Most recently, if you've been at the golf restaurant over the summer, you notice the new lights and wine barrels out there on the patio, and that was, that was through their foundation as well. The pavilion by the tennis courts and pickleball courts is, was funded by that family. And what we're doing here is the, the platform tennis courts have wind screens all around, obviously, atop of Simsbury Farms, still, if you've ever been there, it's a pretty windy place. Those wind screens that are currently there are in rough shape. They're going to be paying for wind screens to replace all four sides, going up eight feet on one side where there's more sun. And one thing that I think the community will, community will notice, the side facing the parking lot is going to say, welcome to Simsbury Farms, in big white letters on that new windscreen, so it would be kind of an impressive thing, along with the new banners on the poles.
Nice.
It's a nice touch that, that the family agreed to pay the extra money to do, and, you know, we're thrilled that they, they wanted to do this, and again, paid for the extra money to kind of make it a little extra special. So those will be installed, they've been ordered, and will be installed in the next three weeks when they get, when they arrive. And again, all of our, many thanks to Chris Boswell and her family for, and friends for, for funding this measure.
I have a question, sort of related, I've, I thank Chris for this, you know, donation, but during the, the pickleball tournament that was up there on a super windy day, I believe, someone asked if we had similar for the tennis courts?
We do, and they'll be up next year.
Oh, okay, cool, cool. Okay, thank you. So I'd like to ask for a motion effective tonight, November 14th, 2022, to accept a donation covering the costs of new wind screens for the platform tennis courts at the Simsbury Farms Recreation Complex.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Good luck. That'll be great to see that. You too. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Okay, now we're doing our annual emergency management performance grant application. So I'll turn that over to Maria.
Yes. So this is, as Wendy mentioned, an annual grant that we do apply for. This particular grant does require the municipality to be the applicant. We are then allowed to pass through the funds to the fire district. It is a formulaic grant. We are anticipating, should we apply, that we would receive a little under $13,000, and then an additional rounding up $1,300 from the federal government for some PPE expenses. Again, this would then be passed through to the fire district. So we are looking for your support to apply for that grant on their behalf. And that grant does also require you all, as part of your resolution, I'm sorry, as part of your motion, to approve the attached resolution in the packet.
Okay. Is that, is that something we should read? Or I'm not sure.
We just referenced it within the motion.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
And the resolution, here, I can tell you which page it's on if you give me just a moment. That is on page.
Twenty.
Page 26 of your packet is the resolution. That's referenced in your motion.
We don't have to read it.
Correct. As long as it's referenced in the motion, as we've done in the past, that should be sufficient.
Okay. So move effective, effective November 14th, 2022, to apply for the 2223 Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented, and to approve the attached resolution. And in the event that the grant is awarded, the following additional motion is in order. Move to accept the 2223 Emergency Management Performance Grant and to authorize Maria Capriola, Town Manager, to execute all documents related to the grant award.
So moved.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we move on to our favorite portion of the night is the tax refunds. Ask for a motion effective November 14th, 2022, to approve the presented tax refunds in the amount of $5,518.98, and to authorize Town Manager Maria Capriola to execute the tax refunds.
So moved.
I'll second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're moving on to the PA 2129 opt-out action for the accessory dwelling units and residential parking standards. And we have our town planner here, George McGregor, who I believe is going to fill us in and give us some context.
Good evening. Thanks. Thanks, everyone. I had just like a page and a half of notes, but I think it might help kind of just reframe, unless you don't want me to reframe anything. You could take questions, but just, we talked about this a little bit, but there really is two elements. If you remember, PA 2129 was approved back in June of 2021, and it established a couple of state mandated zoning frameworks. It's probably the best way to say it, particularly related to accessory dwelling units, which we've, we've talked about a couple of times as, as a group. But it also includes required and mandatory standards for residential parking. So if you recall, unless individual municipalities opted out by vote through their zoning commission and then their elected board, those standards would be, would, would apply to that locality without change, without ability to amend, without anything. It requires a two-thirds majority. So the two topics, if you remember, accessory dwelling units, the commission opted out in January of 2022. But I think it's important to, to remind you that they did come back in July of this year and revise our current, or revise our accessory use standards to be more in line with the state requirements. And so that was adopted by the zoning commission back in July. We didn't spend a lot of time talking about the other item, which is residential parking standards. It was, it's been really less discussed in, in most municipalities, but it did require one space per studio, one space per one-bedroom, and two spaces per two-bedroom. Now, that is different than how Simsbury handles residential parking. We require two spaces per unit across the board, particularly in our, in our, in our widest town-wide regulations. We do require the same number in our, in our center zone, which matches the state code. The commission also opted out of that back in, in October. If you remember, the primary reasons, they do apply to both, and I just, I kind of wrote it down just so I remembered. Primary, the primary findings and reasoning by the zoning commission was that local zoning regulations should and can be developed and adopted according to the needs of the community, and should reflect local conditions. Remember, if we, if we choose not to opt out, we, we, we have to take the state standard, at least. By, by opting out, we do, we are allowed to, to amend our, our local regulations, draft new regulations as they fit the community. So we have, we have a combined, I think on page two of my, my packet to you, a combined resolution which opts out of Public Act 2129, both residential parking standards and the accessory unit standards. I'm happy to answer any questions?
Eric?
A question about what two spots mean in terms of like a typical driveway. So if you have like two garage spots, and then you had two cars that parked behind those garages, does that typically meet the need?
It absolutely does. Yeah. So my read, if I could, if I can interpret the, the state, the state mandate, was more directed towards affordability issues and multifamily issues. So one of, one of the barriers to entry can be the, the additional parking spaces, which, which require a developer to get more land. And so, so I think that was, the intent was, um, at least the purpose does not, it hardly affects single-family residential properties. But, but our discussion at, at the zoning commission was, perhaps we should look at our, our, our parking standards to make them better fit and tailor to the community. So, so that it is not a barrier to multifamily development. We haven't done that yet, but we did have that discussion. Thank you.
Okay. I commend you guys on the, the commission for, for going, you know, outside of the box of the past regulations and making it more, you know, a little bit more liberal than it was to align closer to the state. And I think that was, makes it, you know, easier to opt out for the board, that we are doing the most that we can in our community for those who want to live here and who do live here.
So the.
All right, Chris.
This is sort of like the EDC scenario in the sense that, you know, community feedback, you know, what works and what doesn't work. Are we getting feedback from people that, I don't have enough parking, or developers saying, I can't do what I want to do? Because if my simple mind is correct, our, our rules are more onerous because we require an extra spot in those instances where you'd logically only, you'd think only need one spot? Is that, is that a first correct statement?
That is a correct statement.
So then have we had feedback that we have a problem?
We have not had feedback from developers suggesting that those, those, those requirements are too onerous. We have not.
So then what is?
We haven't had a new application since I've been here as well. We haven't had a new, you know, multifamily development.
So is our, I think about the statements you made about essentially local governance, and like, local governance should assume what's, they assume to be the best for them. So are we doing a project because we feel like we need to be more in line with what the state is doing? Or are we doing a project because we're hearing that we're out of line, and we have a problem, and it's not comporting with what we want and we have, what we have in town? And we have, so that's what I'm troubled by, is why are we even looking at this?
Oh, yeah. It's probably better for me to say that the commission thinks that we need to look at all of our parking standards across the board for, for, for both commercial and residential purposes. And, and I do think that's a good idea. I think there are occasions where we do, in fact, require too much parking. And, and it may be in some of the cases with, with, with residential development, but it's usually related to the unit mix. And so if we could, you know, potentially consider some, some changes that may be more accessible for the development community. But no, the answer is that we haven't had a lot of pushback. No. But, but we do think it's worth looking at. Again, less impervious surface, those kinds of things are all better for, for the community.
Don't argue that.
George, I have a question. The way we've looked at this, the way it has evolved through the zoning commission is, it's, it's kind of seems like it's in two parts. One about like the, the resolution to opt out regarding the ADU standards, and then a few months later, we had the parking one. But when we decide whether or not to opt out of the state statute, isn't it really like, it's, it's not, we're not making two different, we're not making a motion to opt out regarding ADUs and a motion to opt out of the parking. It's, it's like, it's not really two separate statutes, right? It's not two opt-outs. It's one thing. We just kind of, it evolved under the way we did it to kind of look at those two things separately.
Yes.
I mean, I mean, we can't say we want to opt out regarding how we looked at ADUs, but then take the state part for how they did the parking. I mean, you can't.
I think you, I think you, I think you can. That is not what we would recommend, but, but I, but I, but, but I think you certainly can. I mean, full disclosure, this is what happened. So the zoning commission opted out back in January. After I got here, we read the opt-out resolution. And the opt-out resolution that the zoning commission adopted did not include any references to the PA 2129 related to parking spaces. So I had them do it again. So that's why it, that's why it seemed like two pieces.
Right. But I was thinking that you would not be opting, you wouldn't be picking and choosing the parts of the statute you were opting out under. I mean.
So my read of the statute is that, is that you could. So they're, they're in different sections of PA 2129. They have different section references.
I guess that's kind of a legal, maybe, question.
Sure. I mean, my, my discussion with Bob is.
Is that you could?
No, I'm not, I wouldn't answer it that way, because I don't know that we had a direct conversation that can you do one or the other. But my, my sense is that they are in different sections, so it could be an option. I, I, you know, as your planning director, I think that having the ability to draft local zoning regulations is in your best interests.
Right. Right.
It's in the community's best interest, for sure.
So I'm sure this question, I'm going to just ask the question that might have come up at the zoning board, is if somebody was coming for an ADU, they were putting a studio, you know, it's most likely on a single-family residence in town, obviously. Is there any hardship that would, that would, because they would be forced to have two parking spaces? So they would not be able to have the accessory dwelling unit?
So it did not come up, I would tell you. I mean, we do have the ability still under your, under your zoning regulations to get a variance from, from, from requirements that, that are too burdensome. And so we do have that process that hasn't gone away.
Okay. And you can't park on your lawn. You can't, you're not allowed to park on the lawn. And there's no, and street parking, though, is allowable at all times in Simsbury? Technically?
Yeah, I think technically. So the ADU requirement is one space per unit?
Wendy?
Oh, yeah.
One more question?
Yeah, sure.
As you know, the, our regs have become more similar in many ways to the, the state regs. But one notable exception is the state doesn't require a public hearing, whereas we continue to require that locally. If a homeowner wants to build an ADU, and they meet all of the criteria, and I've just asked, I've always struggled to understand the purpose of the public hearing, because as long as they meet the criteria, my understanding is we would be in, setting ourselves up for, you know, potential litigation if we still denied the ADU. Maybe you can.
Great point.
Correct me on that.
Well, that's, that's, that's a difficult question for your planning director to answer. It is, it is, is the zoning commission's prerogative that when, they have found that when a unit is detached, it has different impacts on the neighborhood and/or neighbors than an attached unit does. And so for those reasons, they want, they want the ability to hear from the neighbors and adjoining property owners as part of that public process.
I understand. Thank you for answering that question.
Well, I would like to weigh in that there was just a recent example of that, I believe. I don't know how far it got, but there was a lot of public audience on a neighborhood where they wanted to do a detached ADU, and you got quite a few residents that came out against it.
This room was full.
Yeah. And, and so the, so the question was if, to go with Eric's, if they met all the townwide requirements, you could say no, basically, based on the feedback from the town. And then this person, which I think has happened before, which we've heard about before, could sue the town. Because what, there was a case, I believe, where somebody on the zoning wanted to detach. They were voted down, and they came back and they went to litigation on it. I'm not sure if that's true, or under whose term that was, but that's a story.
I think there, there are a, a, a one or two previous examples of, of challenges to that. The only thing I would say to that is, again, that the, the special exception process is different. And so the, the zoning commission is allowed to apply that special exception criteria, which includes traffic and property values and, a word we, we use often, a phrase, orderly development. And so they, they can apply those standards, which may appear on their face to be sometimes subjective, but we, we try to get them to, to focus on those objective standards. Is there, is, is this the right place for it? Are there impacts on adjoining properties?
One more question. How many detached ADUs do we have in Simsbury? Do we know?
Yeah, we do know.
You don't have to tell me tonight. I'll ask you tomorrow.
It's a, it's a, it's a small number.
Okay.
Like, less than 10.
Okay. Just curious.
More than two.
And like, wondering how many.
Detached? Yeah, I think it, I don't want, I don't want, I don't want to say it out loud, because I don't want to be wrong. I thought six, but.
And in relation to how many we've been asked for, I guess, would be another question.
I think we, we certainly have a, a much higher number of attached units.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I share my thought process about how I plan to vote? Would this be the appropriate time to do that?
Do you want me to read the motion and then do discussions? Chris pointed out before. So I'm asking for a motion effective November 14th, 2022, to approve the attached resolution as presented. Anybody want to? I'm looking at the.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a.
You motioned, I want to get to Eric's comments.
Yes, so someone has to second.
Yeah.
Okay. So any discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll kick us off. I just wanted to start just by acknowledging that the state statute is attempting to solve a, you know, very real problem in Connecticut, which is the shortage of affordable housing. How effectively this does that, I think, is up for debate. But I'm really sympathetic to what the statute is trying to do. I also appreciate the zoning commission for, you know, their willingness to look at our regs and make them in some ways at least as permissive, and in some ways even more permissive than the state regs. There are still, you know, nothing is perfect. There are still some ways in which I think our, I wish our regs would be more similar to the states, especially around the requirement for the public hearing. Having said that, there's also parts of the state statute that I find problematic, in particular, the lack of a residency requirement, which I think can have some unintended consequences. And it really goes against, I think, even the spirit of what the, the regulations are trying to do. It's just my opinion. But I think ADUs are something that, they can not only address affordability, they can be a revenue stream for homeowners who want or need one. And they can also be a place for people with disabilities to be able to live independently. And I think that they're an important option. And I would, you know, encourage, you know, our residents to, to consider these. And I'm glad that our regs have been, you know, adjusted. And, but I think everything in balance, I'm going to support opting out so that we can continue to regulate these locally, and hopefully continue to make these regs even better as we continue to get more feedback.
Thank you. Great. So all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, that motion needed four, so we have five, so it passes. Okay, so we've opted out. Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
And the next item is the scheduling of a public hearing for proposed amendments to the bicycle ordinance. I would love to have Maria fill us in on how, Amber's question earlier was, you know, how this came about and why we're looking at this now.
Sure. So I think as most of you know, we have an internal, we called our Traffic Authority Group. We get together once a month, and we really just look at matters, really, that are sort of mobility-related matters regarding vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, et cetera. That team includes the chief. The chief currently serves as our legal traffic authority for the town, sometimes referred to as the LTA. The deputy chief, our town engineer, Tom Roy, our deputy town engineer, and our planning director, along with myself, participate in that. And one of the issues that came up is that it would probably be good to take a look at our bicycle ordinance. I believe that has not been updated since 1990. So we took a look at that. And we do have a couple of edits that we believe are housekeeping in nature. One of them is that right now, if a, if a path is less than eight feet, that is considered a sidewalk, eight feet or more is considered a multi-use path. The ordinance right now references five feet as a sidewalk, but really, it's something less than eight feet. Another item that we consider to be. than eight feet. Another item that we consider to be housekeeping in nature is most municipal fines now for violations are typically $90. And in terms of ease of administration, the ordinance was written that for a first offense, there would be a certain amount. For a second offense, there would be a second amount. But just to make it, again, consistent with our other, many of our other fines, just a flat fee per offense. The piece that would be a change, and we would like for your consideration, is to allow reasonable and safe use of non-motorized bicycles and scooters on any portion of a sidewalk. So, you know, if you think of some of our more narrow paths, such as, you know, the path over in the Squadron Line neighborhood as a for example, or the more narrow pass in the Latimer Lane neighborhood, again, as another for example. You know, certainly we have, you know, families taking advantage because it's, again, safe and reasonable use of those sidewalks with children on scooters, bicycles, et cetera. So again, we thought this was a sensible proposed recommendation for your consideration. And what we would be looking for this evening is for you all to schedule a public hearing for about a month from now. And that, at that opportunity, we would also be able to take input from the public as well in terms of, you know, concerns, support, et cetera, that they might have with the proposed changes.
Just as an FYI, I did send an email to both Deb Thibodeau, who's head chair of the Bike Ped Community, and I also forwarded to Steve Mitchell, who's a big champion of biking in town, to make sure that they were aware that this public hearing was coming so that they can come and weigh in on their thoughts and hear from other people. And I hope the walkers out there too are listening and will know to come to the public hearing. So ask for a motion tonight, effective, well, tonight, November 14, to set a public hearing to receive public comment concerning proposed revisions to Chapter 67 of the Town Code concerning bicycles for 6:00 p.m. on Monday, December 12, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll have a public hearing on December 12. And that is our only meeting in December, just as a reminder, which is pretty good.
Is that when we're doing the Secret Santa?
Yes, we're going to talk about that after executive session later.
I won't be here, that's all.
Do you want to do it again, though?
What's that?
The Secret Santa, you're going to be in again? Yes. You're fun to buy with. You got a great gift last year.
I did.
If you forgot, I can maybe like...
Don't worry, I've got it. I've got it in my drawer. It's in my top drawer.
Okay, a little levity here before we get into the tax, the real estate holdings item. So this item, I am going to let Maria just fill everybody in on this one.
So our town attorney, I know, briefed you all on this tax appeal case last month in executive session. He was able to negotiate a settlement agreement on this tax appeal in a manner that was consistent with his discussions with you. So he has brought forward for your approval this evening, the tax settlement agreement.
Excuse me. So my only question was that this is what we discussed, when we discussed it. So there's no change here. We told him to move forward with it. So I'm going to read the motion. And ask for the motion effective November 14 to approve the joint stipulation for judgment for docket number HHBCV 206060337-S, Desrey TV's Real Estate Holdings LLC versus the town of Simsbury for the tax appeal on the taxable real estate located at 60 Hoskins Road is presented and authorized Town Attorney Robert D. Crescenzo to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and our last item?
It's too late. Slow walk down here. Slow walk. Okay. That's a real delay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Francine.
Francine. You don't want to be on TV. So the last item, or the last two items that we had for the COVID-19 relief nonprofit grant, we had asked for additional questions. One of them is the Simsbury Main Street Partnership. That last time, there were questions about the Simsbury Celebrates funding. So we went back and the Simsbury Main Street Partnership just expressed the need for the fall, the additional $2,000 to go to their losses and issues during COVID. So that's the first motion. The second motion is for Simsbury Youth Football and Cheer, who've applied and met the criteria of the application. We are offering a funding in the amount of $1,000 because there was, there's a financial information that we have available. I think it's on our finance subcommittee agenda for reference. I'm just going to mention that here. But we felt they lost fundraising capabilities in the season that was closed. I'm not sure if it was '20 or '21.
2020.
2020.
2020, thank you. And so we looked at future years where they did have the fundraising, which was around $1,200. So we thought we would offer $1,000 to make up for the loss due to COVID of their fundraising capabilities. So I will read both motions. And it was, thank you for separating the motions because it makes it easier to, if you don't want both of them. Move effective November 14, 2022, to approve funding in the amount of $2,000 for the Simsbury Main Street Partnership through the 501(c)(3) nonprofit grant program.
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Move effective November 14 to approve funding in the amount of $1,000 for the Simsbury Youth Football and Cheer through 501(c)(3) nonprofit grant program.
So moved.
You. I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any abstentions?
So I should abstain because I did from the initial...
Yeah, you can abstain.
Okay.
Okay, so we have four, four and one abstention. So that passes. So thank you. And we have now officially closed the nonprofit program. Next is, anybody have any changes to the meeting minutes? I do not. Okay. And who are we having in executive session tonight, Maria?
I will take that one.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Oh, wait, so you're just taking it? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, I thought you were going to take it and read it.
Are we staying here or going to your office?
This is fine. Yeah, it's just very quick, very quick.
Okay, so we'll be, we're going to ask for a motion to move to executive session for the board with Maria Capriola.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're in executive session.